All right, it's it's six thirty. We'll now call the Garden School District Board of Directors meeting to order. Madam Secretary, can you establish a forum for us?
Yes.
Yes, could you lead us in prayer?
We bow your heads. Generally, Father God, I just thank you for today. God, I just thank you that you've allowed us to gather together. And God, we just ask that you impart wisdom on us and as we make decisions for the Garden School District. Lord, we just thank you for your divine protection for our school district, our employees, our staff, and our students. And God, we just ask for that hedge of protection to continue to be around our students and staff and employees here at our district. Lord, we just ask all these things in your own amazing name. Amen.
Amen.
Please stand with me for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the God of our nation. One night under God, in the business world, where other people do not.
I am going to go ahead and be able to start with our recognition first tonight, and it's so great to see such a large crowd. So I'm going to start with our students. So I have three students I wanted to recognize tonight, and the first one is Mr. Joaquin Moreno-Garcia. Come on up, Joaquin. So Joaquin is in kindergarten, and he got Student of the Month for October. And one of the persons who nominated him said he's an excellent student, very well mannered, and he's a friend to everybody, always willing to help his peers.
Parents here?
Yes, parents, come on up for a picture. We want you in the picture, yes.
Too late, man.
Okay, okay.
It's okay if you get one in, except that hat's gotta get off.
Our next student is Mrs. Marissa Van Scavver. Marissa, come on up. And we also would recognize her as our fourth grade Student of the Month for October, and one of the teachers who nominated her said she works hard, she's very well focused, knows what's expected of her, and she always takes time to be very explicit. If you've never had a conversation with Marissa, you need to sit down and visit with her. She has great, great leadership qualities. She's going to be an amazing public speaker one day, and she always does her very best and is definitely a role model.
Home desk?
Yes, brother, you too. Come on up, Mason.
Here we go.
This recognition is a little bit different. It's not a Student of the Month, and there's a picture actually. Oh, let's get it. Mrs. Molly Godwin, come on up, Molly. Mrs. Molly, I wanted to recognize her because of her accomplishment that she had this season at the fair. So she got Supreme Heifer at Nevada County Fair for the cattle show out of all the other ones. She went on to the Arkansas State Fair, and she got the Champion Pee Wee Showman for the Market Steer in the Breed and Beef Division. And she also got fourth overall exotic heifer at the State Fair. So, and I talked to Grandma today, and Grandma said the judge even complimented her on her showmanship skills. So we're very proud of Molly and all of them. Lots of dedication.
Great job.
So I did have two of my staff from each campus that I wanted to recognize tonight, so I'm going to start with the ones who are present. So, you know, a lot of the staff at the elementary, they drive between the campuses. And so it leans on a lot of people to keep everything running and keep the ball going. And so I just wanted this month, I really wanted to recognize one who has stepped into a new role this year and has done it with a lot of grace for me and just picked up everywhere and anywhere. She's always encouraging for me, and she just always knows exactly what I need to hear, exactly what little motivation to get me through the day. So it's our secretary at the elementary campus, Miss Amanda Cody. You would never know that this is her first time to be a school secretary. You can never. The next one, she's new to this position at our school. She's brand new to the state of Arkansas. And I tell everyone that it's like a miracle, thank God, that she ended up in Little Old Garden. She filled a very important role, and it takes a lot of weight off of me as a principal because she steps in, I'm saying a lot. She steps in no matter, no matter what the challenge is, and she faces a lot. She comes, and I've never, ever, in my whole three months this year or whatever, I've seen her without a smile as our special ed teacher at the elementary, Miss Maxine. Yes, we're really excited to have her, her husband and her three kids. We love every one of them. And not pictured, but primary school teacher of the month was Miss Bradley, who is incredible. And Mr. Monica Henry. So again, you know, I'm driving between campuses almost the whole day, but Miss Henry keeps primary running without a glitch. Miss Cody keeps elementary running, and it's like, if you, if you want to know who the bosses, just go talk to them.
Okay, so I'm going to start with my students, and I do have a few that are not here, but I've got some great ones. And I asked teachers, once you did the nominating and the voting, to send me some words, and as always, Ms. Storm is going to come through, because that's what she does. So our first Student of the Month is Ayanna Garland. Now, Ayanna? Ayanna is a rock star student. We'd like Ms. Storm to rock star teacher. What Ms. Storm said is she's grown so much within the past few years. She has a leader by nature, and we're glad to see her put that to use during the day. Okay, our next Student of the Month, I'm not going to lie, I'm biased, but I'm also going to tell the truth in an I wouldn't vote. Our next Student of the Month is Courtney Boar. And Ms. Storm said, Courtney is a student you can count on to bring the energy and fun to the room. She isn't afraid to voice her opinion or to try. She's an example when it comes to trying your best, and I will also say she has grown so much in the past two years, you wouldn't believe. Absolutely.
Are you really?
Yes.
First student that gave me trouble here in the studio. Not bad trouble.
I ask questions. It's in her nature.
It's something about Eric Feldman or something.
Okay, our up to here month is here is Penelope Lane. And I will have been informed with that because she said Penelope doesn't take failure as the final option. She's going to do everything in her power to succeed. She doesn't mind asking questions, reviewing examples, or helping others, everything she does is for her education. Okay, and we have a couple of teachers we're going to recognize and some staff we're going to recognize. Our first recognition for teacher is Mr. James Duran. And I'm going to say this, coming from an old history teacher, I have been nothing but impressed with everything I've seen from Mr. Duran, and I think anybody who has watched him teach will say the same thing. Ms. Storm said, Mr. Duran is the epitome of garden success. He sets high expectations, creates rigorous assignments, and fosters a culture of learning. He's a great addition to the campus community, and I could not agree more, and we just, all of the stars lined up for this, so we are so happy to have him in garden.
Didn't bring my parents. I don't. They may not have wanted to be here anyway. Appreciate it. Thank you. Good job, Bill, then, at the program.
Our other teacher that we are recognizing is Coach Morrow. Coach Morrow is a dedicated member of the Garden High School team. He is always looking for ways to improve student learning and incorporate different skills in his class, and we are really glad to have Coach Morrow as an addition to our kids.
They act like they're shy.
Okay, our Staff of Month, which I do want to state that our campus voted for a couple of Staff of Month, but we've already recognized one of them, but I would be remiss if I didn't say that our campus also said that Mr. Self was going to be one of our Staff of Month. Anybody who's seen what's going on with the buses this year, Victor, you know, knows that we couldn't do it without him, so I do want to say that. But first one is Miss Amy Ledbetter. And Ms. Storm said, Miss Ledbetter is an integral part of our staff. She provides praise and positivity when it's desperately needed, and she's always willing to lend a helping hand or let me lay in her floor when I just absolutely need to lay. Hey, the last staff I've got to recognize is one who we all know we could not do it without, and that is Miss Renee. Miss Renee does it all. Miss Renee has an enrichment class. Miss Renee steps in the sub whenever she's needed. Miss Renee steps into the office whenever she is needed. There is nothing Miss Renee doesn't do. And just like.
She keeps it big.
She is, but in the greatest ways. Miss Renee's ability to bend and fit any role given to her is applaud worthy. She shows up to work with a smile, a mission to support students and staff, and make sure our students enjoy school. Yes, every morning when she walks in, she says, who am I today? Every morning, that is how she comes in. But our students that are not here that I do want to recognize, Jemaya Garland, who is a senior. Ms. Storm said, it's always refreshing to see Jemaya in the hall. She offers a smile and extends positivity wherever she can. She is always the one to step up when someone needs her, and we're thrilled she's staging on that path. Lebraylin Washington. Lebraylin is kind, hardworking student. He absolutely is. He emerges as a strong leader in his graduating class. You can always count on him to step up, encourage others, and not accept anything less than the best. Hayden Smith, if you know Hayden, he is dedicated to being a great student. He does not quit until he reaches success. His work ethic is outstanding. It's infectious to those around him. We could all take a page out of his book, and he is absolutely one of the most well-mannered students you will come across, period. And then the last one is Benji Evans, and Benji starts everything with the end in mind. One of his many strengths is being able to relate and connect his work to the skill. He is always working to increase his learning through practice, project, or test, and he's a pretty good runner, too.
Or there's one I have to hear of. And we would also like to recognize some extra special folks. And of course, this one person probably didn't expect this, and she said she wasn't going to get up here to help me, so I'm going to get her up here anyway because I would like to recognize Ms. Millie for her hard work. At all times. Millie, I have to take the picture, so. Because we're going to say that thing.
Now, you're not, you're up here. You're going to get everybody else up here. Your turn.
Okay, I want to recognize.
We'll just do this as a group. Get everybody up here.
Okay, Becky. She's my high school manager. She started, primary manager, and started the high school. Brandy, she started at high school, and I sent her to elementary. That's my manager, she's good. I couldn't live without her. So, like, keep me straight.
You're fine. You're fine. I'll get out of the way.
Janice, if you know Janice. She gets me laughing every day. Ashley. I just had to look at her, and she's smiling. I know everything's good. Isis, please argue on this one.
What if I see her have good girls, Becky, when you got here? But she brings them to these men. And the last, this is time. Good things that morning with kids at primary.
Can you get them all in there? Turn sideways?
Sure.
When she in? Remember, they're up before dawn.
Yeah, that's such a strength.
They're working, and if you haven't had their roles.
Everybody would decide.
Thank you. You'll get a chance to bow.
And they never come in there.
Yeah. All one thousand nine hundred and thirty-two year olds. Yeah, we appreciate.
Little recognition.
Yes, sir.
That's all of our recognitions. So those of you that have been recognizing, if you don't want to stay for the rest of the board, maybe they're an excuse to head out. Anyone who wants to stay is more than welcome, but you don't have to.
Please sign the signing sheet to get the change.
We have a personnel package. It's pretty straightforward. If y'all don't need to discuss, we can dispense with the.
All the individuals that are, that are listed in here, we've already talked about. The board brief has informed you of it. Unless we need to go into executive session to talk about any of them. Michaela Harper has chosen to no longer be the cheer coach at the high school, and we approved a position for a special ed professional, and that lady's name is Kyondra Thompson. And we also need to formally make Andrew Massing, I have not brought that up to you before, but Andrew Massing, we need to have him take on for a bus driver who is on some medical leave so that we can pay him appropriately for driving that long bus route in the morning and afternoon.
That's great, the president's package, sir.
Okay, we got a motion in a second. All in favor of that motion, say aye. All in dissent, same side. That motion passed. The next item of business will be the approval of the minutes.
Make the motion that we approve the minutes after the minute.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor of that motion, say aye. All in dissent, same side. That motion passed. Next item of business is the financial report.
Financial report from, uh, what's that? Three, probably the month, with a, with a, thirty-seven thousand dollars. And it ended the month with twenty-one hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars. Would have a slight increase. And said, the month of November, so you get all of your, the front end of your taxes, so that number could go up significantly last month. Also, if you have a recap of the fleet service, and this, it does not count like your fresh fruit vegetable grants and some of those. It's just through the regular food service. And it started in the red, and it ended in the black. Not by a whole lot, but it's much of the white, so they're doing a good job trying to keep that in the back of the line. Then on page two of the financial report, this is just a fund balance report that we do every month. Beginning balance, and that's actually how we begin the year. And so these have a lot more of your yearly balances on them. Also has the budget numbers for the year, so you can see the revenue budget numbers and their expenses year-to-date, and their operating budget numbers and their expenses for the month and for the year-to-date. You can see that, and then that operating fund balance goes back to whatever's on that sheet one. And then it's also all of the, the fund balances of all the other funds and has a total of five million, six hundred and twenty-nine thousand. If you will notice, federal fund is a negative, and that's pretty much always going to be a negative. Federal funds, you spend them, and then the state has a pool on the second Saturday of every month. So whatever you spend up until the second Saturday, they'll do a pool, and they'll reimburse your school district. So anything that's been after that is not going to get reimbursed until for the end of the following month. So, and then, of course, the next two pages are your transportation expenses. And I've numbered the bottom of the financial pages, so page three, page, and then page four is your athletic expenses, and they're posted. And then, of course, page five through the five pages of financial, of the fund balances. So you can look at each fund. I did some cleaning up last week until we got rid, and get rid of some of those negative, those zero balances that are no longer in use and get rid of some of those funds. So we'll be done for four pages next month. But you can see where, like, the one thousand, that's all certified salary. But you have to, anything that's paid out of state local, you pay it out of a fund one. And so you can see the expenditures, you can see non-revenue, and the reason you're seeing non-revenue is we take a transfer from state local funds, move it into, to zero those balances out, so they're not ending in a negative every month. So, but anyway, fund one is always certified salary except for to the federal fund. If a certified paid out of federal fund, it's paid out of that fund. But state local, it always will be with one. Any questions?
Thank you. Motion, we approve that financial report.
Okay, we got a motion in a second. All in favor of that, say aye. All in dissent, same side. That motion passed.
Before you move on, I just want to say this so the board knows. I've asked Ron to do something that's kind of outside of her wheelhouse. Because this is not, this is for her to do what she just did, try to, so you guys understand it better. I just want to applaud that.
You so much.
Because it really, I think it really helps to see. It helps me to see it, too, so thank you.
Next item, businesses or business financing considered agenda. The first is.
Okay, the ARP, ARP, S R funds, do you want to talk about it briefly?
I'm not happy to do so. This is what you're used to improving every October, November, then again in April during our third year of these funds. They do have to be expended or encumbered on September thirtieth of the upcoming school year. So we're on the tail end of what we can use these funds, or start from here. We need to care and consider very carefully anything we do, make good plans for use of it. I know you're used to kind of seeing this report, but do you have any questions about it?
I have one question. What, who decides the prorating out in the different areas?
That's, that is a good question. That is a good question. And the committee, we work with what numbers we need in the end, but it's also goes through a committee, the Fort Worth issue, goes through the Ready for Learns Committee, and they have to, and they improve it, and then I, we submit it for your approval at that point. One of my, more background for this is to, now, keep in mind, what you're looking at are the totals over the years at this point. So there's your many decisions, but they might in the past, so by administrators and committee mayor superintendents, it would have been that, kind of the end product at this point, getting close to.
The committee that she's gone through is something that's federally required, so it has to go through a group of community members that she's pulled together, and that's historically what we've done. So it is, it is, we have to revisit it and see, are we doing the funds, expanding the funds where we've told them that we would, and then we report that back to them, and then we look at other pieces. Do we need to move it another? So we'll make recommendations to them, say we want to move these funds a little bit differently here, and that's what she met with them in October, so we're bringing it back now to you for the final approval.
It's rather a living document. We'll probably give it again before, you know, any changes need to be made before the board has any suggestion.
But we decide locally, like in different areas, what best works for us here. Okay.
And once these funds are used, this COVID pandemic is gone, correct? Like, we've had three years I've been in it.
Shemana, there's not been any, any, right. Oh, Lord, it does want me to mention, one of the caveat for this plan and program is that we made a twenty percent of these expenditures have to be spent on towards learning loss specifically. And we are twenty-one point zero seven percent, so we have met our learning loss requirements.
Could you explain that learning loss again for us?
A learning loss, it's just addressed specifically at a time, and the skills that can't last forever. And I'm going to, oh, would you like to think more about that, or any of those that happened here? So, the interview thing is going to be like, um, uh, I'm looking for longer comments. Right. It's, 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 I'm writing briefly. This is your, um, your NWA, Ella, your Renaissance software, we probably know that as accelerated reader, is, you know, that's more familiar. Your RISE materials to get our teachers trained on the new Arkansas roads, our communities, MobiMax, your Lekker curriculum, take flight curriculum for our dyslexia students, anything that we can apply to those skill gaps that were created during COVID. And so it's actually a pretty, pretty broad country. We can also use it for things like tutoring and out-of-school programs. We've used it for supplies for capturing kids' heart. We've used it for a lot of things to address not just academic and social, emotional losses, just the overall impact it's had on our kids. Such a great place. Going to bury any other information I can provide.
Make a motion that we approve the ARP S R fund.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor of that motion, say aye. All in dissent, same side. That motion passed.
The next item on there is the proposed budget for expenditures for July twenty-five to June twenty-sixth. This is required, and it's moved up. Usually it doesn't happen until Ju- January, but because of presidential year, all the voting goes in a little bit earlier. This has to be done, anyone running for office, this needs to be posted, so it has to be approved. And this was, this was created for us and helped develop with Stevens. So Jason Postlaw helped us to develop this budget, and it's basically with a three to five percent increase in each of the departments, as you're looking at the salary fund expenditures and all the pieces. That's where those numbers are generated. Again, this is two years out. So you're, you're taking a shot at what you hope is gonna be there. Um, and that's how we derive that situation of how it would be. Takes our mileage into consideration and then this will have to be, uh, approved by the board and then signed by the board president and secretary of the board.
Anybody have any questions on that?
Motion that we approve the proposed budget of expenditures with the tax levy.
We've got a motion and a second. All in favor of that motion say a, uh, all in dissent, same side. That motion passed.
And the other item in there is board to board transfers. There has not been any, so we don't have to address that. Then the next piece, the board policy update. This is part of curriculum, uh, uh, number, section five curriculum. They have a part of that. This is your first reading. There was one policy that came from the state, uh, for updating. That was four point one one. That's also in your packet. And you'll see where they've just done some language. Um, the rest of this, part of section five. I couldn't find. So, well, we already addressed many pieces of it already back in, in August. Because I couldn't find the board policy, I wanna bring it back to you so we can put electronically, we can put it in our board book. I don't know where it went.
I, I've got a question about the. Each individual deal is, I know we got a vote on this, but can we tear it apart? Can we take some stuff out?
These are the, these are the latest additions of what was, what has been approved by the state, uh, as of July of this year. So, uh, this does not go back into the history of where we were before, but if you read through there and you have a question, call me. Uh, I've read through them. We've, uh, addressed them through our committee that looked at them. Our curriculum folks looked at them. Our instructional facilitators read through them. Because my biggest majority of them were, were curriculum. But if you see something in there that raises question, please call me.
I'm gonna pull the vote draft.
Well, you don't have to do anything here. You don't do anything. This is the first reading. So read through there. If you got questions, that, that'd give me time to call ASBA. And say, tell me about this. Here's the question that came up. Here's what we'd like to do. What can we do with this?
Is it appropriate for us to discuss any of this? Or anybody have any questions or do we need to just talk to you first?
We can, we can talk here if you want, but if you, if you, if you call me, then, then I can talk to you one on one about what your concern is if there's. And then if we make modifications, I can send it to all the board members. Say, here's what, uh, here's what was recommended. Here's what ASBA says we can and can't do. And then the last item on here is discussion. Uh, I was asked to put on the agenda a discussion of pep rallies. So I'm gonna.
Yeah, I mean, they say, I mean. If, if the administration beat a pep rally, it's gonna be beneficial to have pep rally. If they don't, I mean, have pep rallies. I'm, 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 I'm a pep rally. It is not a distractor. So I mean, I, I think the administration's there that he does have pep rallies.
And, and I'll tell you what brought on some of this discussion is the last pep rally we had was fabulous. And I know some of you, some of you may have got to go, um, but it was, it was an amazing pep rally. So, um, are they great for kids? Yes, are they great for kids all the time? Uh, it's gonna be a toss-up. So when I talk with, with Coach Jackson, I ask his, his thoughts about it. And what he told me was if it's just the high school, we got band, cheerleaders, football players on the court and we got. A few kids in the, in the stands. So having a pep rally that's gonna be like that one isn't, it probably won't happen. Uh, we, there was a, there was a period of time, now going back to my age, we had one every week. I loved them, hated them, even though I was on the court every time being yelled at and all that kind of stuff. But still, there's other things that we have to think about. Is our academics? We have to think about how much time out of class. And I know there came a time when there were a lot of people that tried to skip out of going to pep rallies and tried to avoid them even. So. Uh, my recommendation is that we, we do leave it with the high school principal, elementary principal. The athletic director, so that we can have not just a sports pep rally, but it may be even an academic pep rally. As we're getting closer to some academic success. But I think that the thing that, uh. That brought this on is excitement for the kids. We wanna have, let kids have some fun too. And it's not just all rigor and work. So.
When I think of pep rally, I don't think about what you just said. Pep rally was structured. All that went on the floor at the same time. It was structured. Being me, I did they thing up in the stadium. The pep rally was pretty much for the cheerleaders and the players. And then in the, and we give, we get the community involved, but all them folks on, on the floor at the same time, that's unheard of for me. You know, but I was like, give to administration, hey, let's just, that's just, that's a loaded thing. Maybe we don't have a pep rally every week, maybe we have. Read this year, voted next year, buy the next year. I mean, let them see what's going on. Because, I mean, I'm a big pep rally fan. If it's control, it's a structure.
What, what do y'all think? I should like to have y'all's input and then I'll wait and tell you mine.
I think generally speaking, I'm pro pep rally. However, I think, uh, that subject is beyond the scope of the board. I think that's for the administration to handle. I would encourage the administration to give the students every opportunity to. Exhibit school spirit, but not really our job to do.
I agree. I, I enjoy the community involvement. You know, I've enjoyed, you know, being able to take off work and come watch my kids, you know. He got to play in the band the other day, you know, but because there weren't enough kids to play in the band. So he was helping play in the band. I, I enjoyed that. Um, and I think building back our community pride and school spirit, but I've, I've, I defer to administration for that and we'll support you.
So I feel the same way.
Yeah.
It ain't our job.
Uh, I, I feel the pep rallies help create a well-rounded student. One that's not totally burnt out on academics, even going into collegiate stuff. You know, they say academics. Athletics and social are a big, you know, big part of making that well-rounded student. Now, once again, I, it's maybe out of our wheelhouse to do that, but. Some community members contacted me and asked me, did, um. Why didn't we do that? And then, you know, it was COVID related and then, you know, now we're out of COVID, so. Uh, should we go back to something we've done prior? And, um. I agree with all y'all. Our administration should handle that, but I think we should also consider that. Some of these children's lives are mundane away from here. And something like that is a big, that's a big part of their life. I mean, forty years later, I still remember the pep rallies I went to. Great, a great deal. Couldn't wait to be a football player so I could be involved, you know, uh, in that, cause it was so special. Uh. Um, and I get back to, you know, y'all understand is we, we're doing the best we can to. Uh, build our education, get it at a, at a better level. Well, we remember when. Garden produced some good students, good, we had good schools and we declined or have we, uh, have we. Have we declined because we're too focused on just education? I mean, is that a detriment to creating these well-rounded students? Uh, I don't, I don't know the answer to that.
Coming out and I, I commend our, uh, administration for getting us back, you know, post-COVID, getting us back like the Veterans Day program, like. Uh, you know, teaching our kids that we're veterans and what, what our military and what our, um. You know, veterans do for our country. Um, and then the Thanksgiving program is coming up. I mean, you know, so I think, you know, you know, reutilizing those. Things that made community members get involved, you know, even that maybe didn't have children in the school district, um, is very exciting for me. So, um. I hear nothing but positive, um, from the outside world of. You know, in, you know, inside the school, so.
But another, another event that's coming up that I haven't sent to the board yet, but on November the twenty-eighth, Ms. Cave has paid for the Nutcracker Ballet to come. So we're gonna, we're gonna actually have that performed here and all the kids are gonna get to come. So she funded that for us. Uh, board members not invited. Ms. Kid, yes, you are. November the twenty-eighth at one o'clock.
Is that before Thanksgiving or?
It's, it's after. It's after. It'll, it'll be, I think it's Tuesday, Tuesday.
And who, who's gonna perform?
It's actually. You got flyer, they're from Hot Springs, I do believe. Is that, that group? They have a couple of them that are performing over there and she's paid for them to come over here and do it for us. So those, those kind of fun things, we're trying to do. And we're gonna try to be through by two-thirties so we can hit our bus routes. So we may, we'll probably send some out there. We may be a little delayed, but it's worth it to the kids.
Is it gonna be something more of all of the students?
Every one of them. We're gonna be able to get all of them there. So, but those are the things that we're, we've talked about trying to get some of that fun stuff into school. So if there is, is that community spirit and we can. And they, they realize that, yeah, we can have some fun too.
And I think that goes back, you know, bringing in like the, the Nutcracker to perform. Some of the Dawson instructs, instructional facilitator. People had told me they were like, you know, our testing that we do on these kids, um, sometimes has words in it, um, and. Statements that these kids are reading that are kind of out of their context because our kids are not exposed to that, you know, um, so. Uh, so I think bringing these things in and being able to expose these kids, which I know these, uh, you know, our teachers are trying to do that in their classroom through virtual. Uh, visits to different countries and do all these different things. Um, so, you know, applaud Ms. Cave for trying to help our students become more cultured. So. Very exciting.
Is there any more questions or comments about the pep rally stuff? That, that y'all, administrator, do y'all have any comments?
Who do I see about these, uh, community service hours?
High school, uh, contact Ms. Wolf about high school service hours and they'll be, and then talk to, uh.
Cause I got a lot of folks wanting to get on the board to be community service providers.
I think that'd be great. Yeah, we're, we're, in fact, they're, they're talking about different ways that they can do that. When I sent that, I think in board brief. Um, there's some other, other ways that we're gonna try to open up some venues for them to actually work with younger kids and do some other tutoring and things like that too. But if there's people in the community that we can help, I think it's a great idea. We just need to be sure that we vet it so that everything is safe and done appropriately, so we document it. So that would go through, uh, high school principal's office. Contact Mr. Wolf.
All right, no more questions. You got a motion to adjourn? You got a motion and a second. All in favor of that motion say a, all in dissent, same side. We're adjourned.